Here for Monday, October 27th at 7:12 PM. Roll call, looks like we have all members with us this evening. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is to provide in the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without any individual liberty and justice fraud.
For motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
I got a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve tonight's agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right, number five, consent agenda, any questions on that? Or if not, we look for a motion.
Motion to approve this consent agenda.
I got a motion by Councilmember Harkoff to approve tonight's consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right, next, matters on the floor, any wishing to speak, please fill out one of the yellow sheets, give it to one of the city staff, and we'll call you up. We will not answer your questions, but we'll consider those for future agenda items. Thus far, we've got two matters on the floor. Carrie Keen.
I'm here today to urge you to not pursue the proposed 1% local option sales tax in its current proposed form. I came here prepared to speak out against it, but the work session did bring forward some things that I consider. This proposal to use a sales tax for the park and community center is outlined in the packet, does not reflect the priorities of the residents that I have spoken to. Implementing this new 1% sales tax concurrent with the proposed 14% property tax increase places an unacceptable burden on the Osseo citizens and businesses. The revenue from this tax in the packet was focused towards two projects, the park and the community center. The park currently fulfills the community needs. Residents I've spoken to do not crave a new park, especially if it means additional taxes. The repeated investment in new designs represents a sunk cost that can be abandoned. We can decline the associated grant that we've been given and just reconfigure the current space we have by adding a dog run or a few picking tables. We could even sell the houses that remain for profit to cover these costs and even bring in additional annual property tax benefit. The community center proposal, I liked this idea a lot at first, but when thinking through cost benefit analysis, it just isn't there. I know there was an idea that this could be a wedding venue of up to $5,000 per wedding. Osseo is not a destination wedding venue city. There's no way we'd be able to bring in that kind of money, and we would just end up using our building the same way we use this one for birthday parties and showers. These projects are not an argument for the additional tax. However, at the work session, it was mentioned this could be used towards roads or other infrastructure projects, and I think that is something worth pursuing. Something that could reduce our property tax and assessment burden is something I think the residents could get behind. I have a long speech, but I'm just going to end it there, honestly. I think that's enough said, and I'd be happy to speak to any of you about any other ideas. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Carol Larson.
Good evening. I wanted to give you an update on the Osseo 150th Celebration Committee activities. As you well know, we've been working every single month this year for special things, including October. We just finished with the Halloween party, and then we've got November Small Business Saturday, and we have December Mini Dazzle. The big thing was our celebration ceremony, September 6th, which was rained out. We had a wonderful program set up, and I wanted to mention right at this point that we've been very grateful to the Osseo Lions Club, who have been with us from day one. And without their help, our books would not have been published. And also to the Maple Grove Historical Preservation Society, which we were able to link to as a 501(c)(3), and they have been just tremendous in keeping our things separate and working with us on checks that we need and money that we had to bring in. So that's that one piece. The second piece that sort of connected, well, that is connected with the celebration ceremony is we asked city staff to put the banners up, what do you call them? The light pole banners, all the way down Central Avenue and in the park. And we also worked to make sure that we had super adequate security because of issues that had occurred earlier that year, about four and a half miles from here. And we needed to have super security. In each of those cases, we would have paid for the security. The committee would have it, it is no money out of city funds. And the work that the public work staff did, we paid. They turned in what they spent to do that work for us. They put up the bunting and all kinds of things, and then they had to take the bunting down. But we paid them. So I want to make sure that everybody knows that we were doing our job as a committee to help the city, which we know we're under tight budget. So, okay, that brings us to, we had a canceled ceremony, and what are we going to do? We are working on a video, and it's going to be interesting. Ken Schneider, raise your hand, he's our video editor. And Anne is our, she's the right-hand person for everybody. She's our vice chair. We just started working on it. We're going to try to follow some of the plans of the program that we had scheduled for September 6th. So there will probably be some time where the mayor has to give his greeting like he would have at the ceremony, and that the council will be around, that sort of thing. But we're just getting into it. We have, three weeks ago, I had sent out information. It's sort of like starting over again, because we had to send out information again to the public officials, and they have responded. And I have to bump them up a little bit, because we gave them a deadline of November 7. But then after that, we're going to see how different things flow together. Ken Kumpala, who was our emcee for the ceremony, he's sort of sitting in the background, because we need a narrator to move us from one video to sort of a bridge to the next part. So we're working on it, and we have no idea when it's going to be finished. We'd love to have it finished by the end of the year, but we're not sure. And then we'll let you know where we go from there, because I'm thinking we may have a premiere if that occurs. But anyway, that's where we are right now. And if any, we still have use of the trailer for our December Mini Dazzle, and then we, which has been graciously loaned to us by Mark Schultz and family. So that's it, that's where we are right now. And everybody sort of knows my number or how to get to me if you have any questions or comments or ideas. So that's it. Thank you very much, and thanks so much for your support all the way down the line.
Yeah, thank you. Committee's done amazing work this year, and we really appreciate everything that the whole team has done. So, thank you. All right, see no other matters on the floor are now closed. Moving on, seven, special business, 7A, accept donations.
Mayor, council, this is a resolution accepting donations of the City of Osseo. Whereas the Osseo City Council is generally authorized to accept contributions of real and personal property pursuant to Minnesota Statute 465-dash, sorry, .03, and whereas the council agrees that said donation would be a benefit to the citizens of Osseo, and whereas the following has proposed this contribution to the City of Osseo and the donation be used for the specific purpose as indicated below, the Osseo Fire Relief Association and the amount of $500 to public education for the fire department.
I think you look for a motion to approve donations. I got a motion by Councilmember Schultz, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Not attorney teaching, I'm welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, this is resolution number 55. Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Councilmember Harkoff?
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye, motion passes five to zero. All right, 7B, presentation of Minnesota DOT Highway 169, welcome.
Okay. Jack, hello. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Charles Androwski. I am a transportation planner with the Minnesota Department of Transportation's Metro District. I, here along with members of the project team, are grateful to be here tonight to provide to you an update on the Metro District's ongoing North Metro Highway 169 corridor study. So we're excited to provide some information and bring you up to speed on this ongoing study and have a discussion about any questions you might have, any concerns you might have about our study progress. So if you'll allow us, we'll do some introductions to the project team, and then I will turn it over to Angie Bursa with Bolton and Mink, who will provide us with that update.
Hi, everybody, I'm Angie Bursa, Bolton and Mink. And this is David Kratz with Mindot as well.
Yeah, West Area Coordinator, my roles are generally Northwest, kind of in counties, so mainly 169.
Well, thanks. So, yeah, we're here to talk about the multimodal study, and this is a corridor study. So this is out, we're out ahead of any programmed improvements on Highway 169, but that's kind of the point, right? That we get out ahead of the needs, so that when there are program projects where we've got some ideas and that you can kind of pick up from where we're at now and move forward into those projects. So going to talk a little bit about the study purpose and need. Again, this is really about Highway 169 itself, but also about how to get across the highway. So that's why you're seeing the title multimodal. It's about vehicles and freight, of course, on the highway itself, transit, but also about people walking and biking across the highway. How do we get them safely across? And, you know, what is driving the need to study this? Is there a number of bridges in particular that are aging and due for replacement over the next 10 years? And several of them are already programmed in Mindot's 10-year capital investment plan. And if they're not already in that 10-year plan, they're going to be in the plan within, you know, a rolling cycle. This corridor was built generally along the same timeline. And so that's really driving the need that we have a great opportunity to look at, what do you do? Do you put back what's there? Do you just replace the bridge itself with some of these interchanges? Or do you replace the design itself and improve, you know, what's on it in terms of the cross street? And then also with the highway, what are the needs? So the study area, we're here tonight to talk about the Osseo area, of course, but we are looking at 12 miles of 169. So from I-394 all the way up to 101st Avenue in Brooklyn Park. So 12 miles of corridors, multiple interchanges and accesses along the way, seven communities, all in Hennepin County, also working with Met Council, and of course, Mindot. So because of that, we've divided our corridor into three different segments just to be able to talk to this, to people about this when we've done our engagement, and people kind of associate, you know, where they live, or where they work, or how they usually travel through this area. Of course, tonight, we'll be focused on segment three, where Osseo is. I won't be talking about every single piece of Highway 169, but I can certainly get you additional information if you want to see the other portions of the corridor. So this study actually started, there was a Phase 1 that began in 2023 that was really focused on just identifying the needs. What are the needs on this corridor? And they did a number of engagement activities, got the public's input on that. We have been involved since approximately a year ago, working on picking up from that point and then developing alternatives and evaluating them. So what are the improvement options that we should be considering, both on the highway and at the interchanges and across the highway itself? And then we'll be finishing up the study portion of our work in winter, March. What do you call March? Is that winter, is that spring? Depends on the year, right? In March next year, with a study report and an implementation plan that just sort of lays out, okay, when there are program projects, how do you kind of pick up the pieces from here and move that forward into projects? So I already touched on this generally, but the purpose and need is really, a focal point of that is the bridge needs. Both the aging bridges, but also there are a number of bridges that don't meet today's current height standards. And you've probably seen that if you, particularly south of Osseo, but in our corridor study area, where some of the bridges have been struck by vehicles. So Elm Creek Boulevard, which is under study with Maple Grove, that is due for replacement in 2027. That one was struck and has funding for replacement. Betty Cracker Drive Bridge between 394 and Highway 55. So there's a number of bridges that are just not built to today's height standards. So again, opportunity, we're going to bring it up, freight's bigger, larger. How can we, you know, we got to address that. We also obviously look at, you know, where do we have areas where there are congestion pinch points? Where do we have safety crash issues? We know there are some of those locations on here. And then, you know, again, where do we have areas where we're missing some infrastructure for people walking and biking across, and how could that be better? So when we are looking at the types of alternatives, we're kind of put these into three different buckets. Because it's such a big corridor, where do you start? We've organized our alternatives into what we call mainline, or what are alternatives that we would consider or need to look at on Highway 169? So with that, we're looking at the types of lanes on 169. How do we improve traffic flow and safety? What's the best way to move people along 169? Is that additional general purpose lanes, or additional EZ Pass or managed lanes? Is that, you know, auxiliary lanes? You see some of those. So I'll talk about all of the types of things we're looking at on the mainline. And then another category is the interchanges themselves. So, you know, what with those interchanges and the bridge needs, you know, do we put back that same design? A diamond, a cloverleaf, a folded diamond? Or is there a better design that would serve the land uses that are out there and the traffic needs that are out there today and people walking and biking? So we're looking at different interchange designs that would serve all modes. And then finally, multimodal. So I've kind of touched on that on the bridges, but also are there areas where maybe we have a gap between interchanges and we maybe need to add a new grade separated bridge specifically for people walking and biking? So we're looking at all three of those buckets of types of alternatives. So I'm just going to walk through the types of mainline or Highway 169 alternatives, and then I'm going to touch on, specific to the Osseo area, what we're looking at for interchange and multimodal improvements. So the first one, we kind of, we like to start, when we think about the highway itself and the lanes itself, we like to start from the lowest cost, most minimal improvements. You know, what can we do to get the best bang for the buck without much investment? So the first thing we would like to look at was just traffic management strategies. Some of these things already exist out there today, like traffic cameras, message boards, you know, things like that, technology to use the existing infrastructure, but get better flow and safety out of the existing corridor. So we're looking at, you know, are those things in the right places? Do we need to add some more? Is there some better, newer technology that we can add to improve safety and flow on the corridor? Then, kind of moving up the chain, the next thing we like to look at is, are there some areas of spot mobility where we can add maybe just a portion of additional improvement on the lanes themselves? And one of those would be an auxiliary lane. So a lane between two interchanges on Highway 169 that could, that really helps the merging traffic, that maybe they're only going from one interchange to the next, and they don't have to merge into the traffic and back out of the traffic. That really helps flow and safety. And I know it's hard to see, you can probably see it a little bit better on your screens there. The map on top, there are the locations in purple. They show where there are existing auxiliary lanes today on the corridor. And then the green lines show where we're proposing to consider new auxiliary lanes. So for the Osseo area, that is basically between 85th and 93rd, or County Road 30. We're looking at auxiliary lanes, both northbound and southbound on 169 in that area. That that would really help, you know, there's a lot of interchange between, interchanging and merging between those two locations that could really help the flow and the safety. Another type of alternative that we're looking at is an EZ Pass lane or a managed lane. Now, you might be familiar with some of these, they exist. It's a priced lane, where you might be familiar with them on 35, 394. 394 is a reversible, so that's a little bit different. But what we're talking about here is one in each direction. There was a study done in 2019 that looked at the whole metro area, and it said, where would we get some benefit from adding additional managed lanes? Or min-pass lanes, or, I'm sorry, EZ Pass lanes, they're called. They used to be called min-pass lanes. And 169 was identified as a corridor at least between 394 and 94.694. So not all the way up into the Osseo area here, but, you know, stopping at 94.694. That's why that box is around that portion of the corridor. So we are looking at that in that segment of 169. And just, you know, kind of looking at, okay, well, that adds a lane, so we're adding width. So we have, we're, you know, what are the impacts? There definitely, there's some tight areas of the corridor, so there would be some impacts. What are the trade-offs, what are the benefits? You know, what does this, how does this help or not? That's something we're evaluating. So, and I think I mentioned already, but that would be in both directions. One of the benefits is that that does really help traffic flow. You know, you're moving more people in those peak hours, and then outside of those peak hours of the day, it is open to all traffic. And then finally, because we need to evaluate this, to compare it to the EZ Pass lane, this is sort of the last option that we look at, just in terms of Met Council policy on adding new lanes. We do look at, well, what if we added just a normal lane, a general purpose lane? Anyone can drive in it, it's not priced, one in each direction, in that same area. So again, not necessarily the Osseo area, but from 394 up to 94.694. So we're looking at that for comparison to the EZ Pass lanes. And then, like I mentioned, I just wanted to show you just one additional slide here, well, two, I think. This is a little busy, but I wanted to kind of show you this whole segment that goes from 94.694 all the way up to 101st Avenue. And I know Osseo's in here, your city limits are in this general area. Couple things that, you know, this is a, this area, we are, there have been recent, you know, that we're not seeing as many needs at some of these interchange areas or as many bridge needs in the next 10 to 15 years. So what we are more focusing on is, like, on the left-hand side of the screen is the I-94.694. We've heard a lot, we did some public engagement. We know from the needs of the Phase 1 work as well, that there are some merging areas that are just challenging. You know, how you merge in and out and how it mixes with the 169 traffic at that particular location. So we're looking at, is there some ways to better, you know, allow that traffic to merge together there? So not wholesale, you know, we're not changing the design of that cloverleaf. That is a big system-to-system interchange, and it will stay that way. But are there some more minor changes we can make to improve how vehicles interact with each other when they merge onto 169 in that location? Then the next interchange to the right is the County Road 130 interchange. And I know it's very hard to see, but the graphic that I have is on the City of Maple Grove's website. I just more so wanted to make you aware, if you weren't, that that is a city-led, City of Maple Grove-led project to replace that interchange. They have funding through the regional solicitation dollars for 2027 construction project, and they are working on a design process right now. They have gotten to this proposed recommendation for that interchange design, and it is available on their website. And again, that, they're moving forward with that process. So that interchange will be improved in 2027. And then moving to the 85th Avenue, Botno, that whole area. You know, this area, I do have a slide on that next, so I'm going to come back to that on the next slide. The County Road 30 or 93rd Avenue, we are not proposing any changes to that. We didn't see any major issues from our work to date, so we are, we're not proposing any improvements or alternatives to that, or 610. And then the 101st Avenue, we kind of start to get into the Brooklyn Park Northwest Growth Area Plan. And so they've got some grade separated pedestrian crossings, at least on their plan at this point, between 610 and 101st, that we would fold into our study documentation. But I'm just going to go to this next slide, just to talk about this 85th and Botno area here. So, you know, what we're looking at really, it's the interchange itself seems to be functioning okay. I know we are looking at the northbound off-ramp, the right turn lane. We're looking at that a little bit closer. I can't really, I don't want to point everybody, I want to. This off-ramp, we are looking at that a little bit closer, just to see stacking-wise if there are any issues there. But what's on the screen here is just showing some multimodal or pedestrian and bicycle improvements that we've identified to date. So there is a existing path or sidewalk that kind of narrows mid-block where that number one is shown. And, you know, one of the recommendations is just to maintain that same width all the way through that location. The number two is just to improve the median area for the crossing where that number two is. So there could be, that's a very wide crossing location for people walking. And if they do need to make a two-stage crossing or get stuck between signal cycles, they could pause if they had a median in that location. And then where the number three is in that green dash line, that would just be considering the feasibility of filling a sidewalk gap on that south side of the corridor there. Again, just trying to make sure that there's good connections, particularly for people walking and biking across the ramp locations. So it's not only about the bridges and the highway, but how people get across the ramps. That's important. And again, there's a lot of other detail on all of the interchanges that if you're interested, we can get you that information. If I tried to present all of this, I would be here for two hours, using up your whole meeting time. So be happy to share that information with you. But our next steps are, we're still working through the alternative evaluation for this study. And then there was a public meeting just a few weeks ago, both online and an in-person meeting. And we're continuing a few community events where we're showing up to try to get some engagement. And then the study report and implementation plan through the end of the year and into early next year. Study website's on the screen and Charlie's contact information. So again, happy to answer any questions. Again, we're very early out front of this, but if there are any specific issues related to Osseo that we should know about, and 169, you know, that's why we're here.
Yep. Questions, council?
I have one question. Just because I have heard this. The, obviously, kind of the phases or the segments that you talked about, is there any studies being done north of that through Champlun? I mean, is that a different part of a different project? I mean, is that a different part of a different project? Because I think a lot of the congestion that we see around County Road 30, you know, around those areas really has to do with things happening north of there through Champlin. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And I know that that's probably a whole different conversation. So you don't need to, but I'm just, it's just, to me, that's, that's the frustration I hear from people in our community is there's a stop sign, there's a stoplight every five feet in Champlin and it backs everything up into... Yeah, yeah, I mean, it backs everything up into our world. And then we get the repercussions of the fact that, of the poor city planning that happened up that way years and years and years ago. So that, that is, you know, just, I mean, this all looks great, but you know, I know from, even when I was telling some people about this, that this was, and I was like, but it doesn't look like it's happening north of here. And it's like, well, that's, that's where the big crazy issue is. But, so I guess I was just, and that could be a side conversation too. I just wanted to give you some feedback.
I have to defer to him and not on that.
Yeah, I think the only...
Can you sit on the chair there so you got a mic so people can hear at home? We can hear you, but...
Yeah. Only project we have going on, it's on 109th, I have the border of Champlin and Brooklyn Park, I believe. They are adding dual lifts to that intersection. Otherwise, no studies or other projects.
Yeah, at one point, then they talk about taking 169 west on 610 and shooting it through Dayton with another river crossing.
Yeah, we did do a very, I think we did that study 2021. It was a pretty high level, so we call it a feasibility study.
Yeah, across Armstrong, I think into Ramsey.
Yeah. Yeah, it was just a high level. Who would the players need to be, what would ownership need to be, questions like that were answered.
Mr. Mayor, so, you know, going through this stuff, I, I am encouraged about some of the other lanes that you're looking to add somewhere between 610 and then down past 81. Because that, there is an area where, you know, people are coming south and all of a sudden, oh, we got open roads, we're just hammering it, right? And it's really difficult for people to merge onto that section. Because especially you're, you're merging on for literally maybe 200 feet before you have an exit lane. And so I, I think it was kind of crazily designed from the jump on that one. But that would do a lot, I think, through this study, since you've identified that, to help ease some of that traffic burden and help traffic flow further south. And then north as well, because it does tend to back up there between 610 and, and 81 interchange. So I'm grateful for the fact that you guys acknowledge that.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, number eight, public hearings, variance for 337 County Road 81.
I'm gonna turn this over to Assistant City Administrator Alicia Vickerman.
Thank you, Mary, Mary and Council. So this request is a, for a variance related to the minimum lot size requirement in the Highway Commercial North zoning district, that's C2N. The applicants, George and Jenna Surleif, Mr. Surleif is here right now? They propose to operate a car repair business at 337 County Road 81. Under current zoning, the minimum lot size required for an auto repair use is half an acre. The subject property is .41 acres, or approximately 18,000 square feet. And it does include, I'm gonna just show you on this map here, a small drainage area to the south end of the property that does reduce some of the usable square footage, puts it down to a point, .28 acres of usable space. So because of the property doesn't meet the minimum lot size, a variance is required before any conditional use permit could be issued. So if it seems like the order is off here a little bit, that's why we need to consider the variance prior to adding any conditions that you would wish to add. The Planning Commission reviewed the application on September 30th. And they recommended approval of the variance to City Council. However, staff and WSB planning consultants recommended denial of the variance. This is, analysis was based on the opinion that the property can be used reasonably under current zoning without a variance. And that lot constraints would make it difficult to safely and efficiently operate a car repair business within the site. Staff's written report and WSB analysis are included in the packet tonight. There's no public hearing for a variance at this time. But I did want to let you know that if you want to take any public comment here, you still can. And we'll be holding the public hearing in the next section. The actions we need tonight from the council. So discuss the variance. And then the choices are to adopt a resolution approving the variance or adopt a resolution denying the variance or table for more action. So at this point, I will turn it over for discussion.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I add just a couple of comments? I appreciate the Assistant City Administrator's very thorough summary of that. I just wanted to add that there were some resolutions added to the packet today. I apologize for the late addition, but we wanted to make sure that the council had all of its options available to it tonight as far as either denying or approving each action. So I also wanted to let the council know that if you feel, depending on where you go with this, if you feel that there should be anything added to a resolution or removed, you can direct staff accordingly. These are drafts for the council's consideration. And secondly, and Alicia already covered this, but we do think the variance decision needs to be made first. If the variance is not approved, then it really would not make sense to approve a conditional use permit if the variance is not approved. So in that's, in that case, if the council were to deny the variance, the applicant could withdraw their conditional use permit application or you could move on to the conditional use item and, and go through that process as well. So those were the comments that I wanted to add.
Mary, I have a question. So I just want to make sure that, that everything is clear here. So when we're looking at the .1 acre, that is the overall aspect. But the drainage easement is included in that, but not functionally available for use. And that breaks this, put them down from .41 to usable acreage of like, what'd you say?
.28, so it's about 12,000 square feet.
Okay, so, I mean, .28 of an acreage, a little bit, that's a little bit more than a residential lot in most of Osseo. That's where it looks at it. So I, I, you know, I, I'm grateful for the fact that this came forward tonight when looking at that. Really, I don't view this as a .41, I always view this as a .28 variance. And I just, you know, we have, we have requirements in our code for a reason, okay? They've evolved and, and everything in this area here comes to make sense. So for me, I don't, I, I'm personally not in favor of a variance for this because I just don't think it's large enough for what needs to transpire there. And it's always difficult. We have, we have things in our codes for a reason. And, you know, we like to try to figure out reach arounds, but this one here is just, I think it's just too small. That's my opinion.
Council, their comments.
Mr. Mayor? In one of the reports here, it says something along the lines of that the applicant has not provided information illustrating the required parking, storage and display areas, along with the necessary drive aisles, that all of which must meet ordinance standards. Is that an oversight on the applicant's part? Is that something that they can provide? Is that something that we should, I mean, or is that just, without that, we really can't even consider this because we don't really have any idea as far as what they envision the blueprint to even look like?
Mr. Mayor, I can speak to that a little bit. So I think, I believe the passage you're reading is a part of the long report that we have from our engineering partners. And over the course of conversations, we have spoken to the applicant about what the parking requirements would be if they, if they were to move forward with this plans. And what we've come up with is four dedicated employee parking spaces. And so that would make a total of 14 outdoor parking spaces. And then if I can drill in a little bit deeper here to the layout of the building, there are three service bays or lift areas that could be included as well. And then there are overnight and extended time parking requirements as well.
Mr. Mayor?
So I got, I have similar concerns based on the space. I think that if we allow the variance, we're just gonna repeat an issue that we just got done taking care of just a few months ago. Where this space is not optimal for this type of use. A variance was granted and it was nothing but problem after problem after problem with the parking and the ticketing and the parking and the ticketing. And at the end of the day, the cup was lost. I, I foresee a very similar pattern were we to allow this variance and then allow the conditional use permit. Words like significantly less than required usable space, that's concerning. I mean, it's not just less, it is substantially less. And especially when we drop down to basically the size of a residential lot to be used as not just car sales, but also repairs. I think it's, it goes to what Councilmember Schultz said. There's a purpose for the rules as we have them. We have variances when there are situations where you're just maybe a little off, right? Maybe you're just, you know, a tenth of what you need off. In this case, it's not that, it's almost half or less than half. So I think that, and that along with what staff did. Staff took the time to kind of deep dive into this. And they've got too small to accommodate the needed parking as one of the results of that looking into this. Again, that's exactly what we just addressed a few months ago. And because of this lack of parking space, the operators ended up needing to use public space. And again, that took a lot of staff time and resources to address that while it was a problem. And then ultimately, it stopped being a problem when we had to do, you know, unfortunately, take away that cup. So I think as, as much as I'd like to defer to the public body that had moved this forward, that being of the Planning Commission, I also put a lot, a lot of deference into staff recommendations and especially when they do actual studies like they did. So I, I believe unfortunately, this doesn't, doesn't cut the mustard when it comes to granting a variance because of those reasons.
Mr. Mayor? A couple of quick things. One, I don't, I'm not totally, I'm not totally in agreement with potentially judging future ownership based on failed mistakes of past ownership. I don't, I don't think that that's, that's an accurate way that we should be looking. I understand the point of that it's the similar type of, but my understanding is that things have, have since changed from car dealership and repair to simply car repair. We have another car repair place right on Central Avenue, two doors down from the coffee shop. That lot is .24 acres big. And they run a pretty successful business out of there. It's .24 acres big. And because it's grandfathered in, it can exist, but this place can't. I, I just, I don't, I don't understand how those two things are different, I guess.
Mr. Mayor? Just one point of clarification too. When we go through and we do the analysis, we are recommending approval or denial. And again, just a recommendation, but that is guided by city code. So, so you understand the benchmarks of what, of what we're looking at.
I 100% understand what you're saying, but I also understand that we have a variance process in place. So why do we have the variance process in place if we are bound solely by city code? Because clearly what variance process say is that there are opportunities for exceptions.
And I would say...
And so that's, that's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
Yep, that's exactly the same thing that is, you're correct. That's why we have the variance process because of how that's written in code, that if you need to get around it for any reason, this is the process to do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Also, since our, it is city code and since our city engineer has recommended, we don't approve it. Just because one was approved way back or grandfathered, I don't think we should start going along with anybody that wants to change the variance. I think that's been looked at rather closely and decided it's not a good option.
Mr. Mayor? I would just focus the council too on the, the legal standard for a variance, which is if you look at on page 82 of the packet, which is the first page of the resolution, it outlines the criteria there about halfway down the page regarding the practical difficulties test. So to grant a variance, if the owner can show that they've met the practical difficulties test, that's really the, that's the legal standard that the council would need to look at. And so the primary thing being that the owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, that their plight is due to circumstances not created by them and that the variance, if granted, would not alter the essential character of the locality. And you also need to find that it's essentially in harmony with the intent of the ordinance. So those are the criteria that you need to look at when you're making your decision. So I just wanted to highlight and, and focus the council on that.
So Mr. Mayor, so given that this is a legal standard, what determination has been made from a legal standpoint that they meet or don't meet the standard? Or has that determination been made from a legal standpoint?
Well, the Planning Commission rendered their decision. You have staff's recommendation, the Planning Commission made their recommendation. But it's up to the council to make that ultimate determination.
But my question is, neither the Planning Council nor this body are, well, one lawyer, but I don't know anything about this type of law. So we're not lawyers. So what I am asking is from a legal standpoint, you may not be able to answer this at this time. So in fairness, don't want to blindside you with the question. But the question is, we're talking about a legal standard. We are not in a position to make a determination whether or not the applicant has met that standard because we're not lawyers. So as council to the, as council to the council, I guess what I'm asking is, have they met that standard or not?
Well, it's the body, it's the job of this body to make that determination. I'm telling you what the law is and this body then applies that. You're acting in a quasi judicial manner here. In your quasi judicial role, you are applying the legal standard to this application. So the property, for example, first prong of the practical difficulties test, the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner. It's the job of this body to make factual determination about whether or not what they're proposing to do on the property is reasonable. That's the job of this body. So you are, I'm telling you what the legal standard is. This body in its quasi judicial capacity applies the standard to the facts in the application and makes a determination. That's what you do when you're considering a land use application.
So again, respectfully, I understand that. But as, as you're well aware, a reasonableness standard is or can be a subjective term. So, but if, if, I, I won't prolong the question, but what I was... So, but if, if, I won't prolong the question, but what I was asking for is, knowing what that standard is, and knowing that we are not lawyers, how, how do we answer that reasonableness test? I mean, we can have the facts. The facts are, it's one quarter this, or it's, you know, it's well below the size, it's significantly less than a requirement, but then on the other hand, we have a council member who's brought up the fact that we do have a grandfathered in business. I mean, so we look at all these things in total, and I guess if, you know, if we're judge, jury, and executioner, we can move forward with that. I was simply asking for a legal determination inasmuch as if I was a private citizen and I didn't understand a law, even though it's my decision to make if I was the CEO of a company, it's ultimately my responsibility to make a decision about a thing that may be legal. I go to my council, I go to my GCO, and I say, what do I do here? Because I'm not a lawyer, but I will leave it at that. I think Councilmember Cook does, I admittedly didn't consider that, the grandfathered aspect of this. I think my larger concern is ultimately, why is the rule in place? And what, what has been shown to me to show that we need to go against what the intent of that rule is? The rule is in place because we need enough space for that type of business to function safely. We know that even though I'm not comparing one business to another, if it's the same type of business, and that first business had a problem that was due to the space, then it, it doesn't matter ownership, you know, it's the same type of business. Now, I'm also understanding that they're not going to do car sales, or at least that's, but, I mean, that's not what I saw in the packet. I saw that in the packet, it was both. But even if it's repair, we're still talking about a reason, we're talking about safety, we're talking about vermin, which was an issue last time, we're talking about having to use extra space. So, I need to understand why this is going to be different than it was last time, given the business is still essentially the same. That's what I need to know.
Would it help you to hear from the applicant?
I think that would be good, if the body is inclined to let them speak. I'm happy to hear it.
Yeah.
I think it would be useful, actually.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Well, the previous business out there was repaired, it was repaired and car sale. Our business only going to be repaired. We have already put a system in place that customer not just going to come, people coming there going to come by appointment, and we are only going to do light duty mechanic. It's not going to be like the business that we had previously.
That is very helpful, thank you. And that, that does actually add some important facts to this in order to make a, you know, good decision. I guess what I'm trying to square up is we got, on one hand, we have a commission whose responsibility is to vet these types of things, who come with one recommendation, and then we have a staff recommendation that doesn't necessarily square up with that. So, that obviously makes this a much more difficult decision, right? So, who, you know, it's not a matter of who carries more weight, but it's how do you, how do you decide between those two things, right? I mean, that's just the, I guess the buildings, the buildings are there, the buildings are there. I've been to the property, I've seen that it's a good sized shop. Again, I go back to also what I saw when, even though the, the area was cleaned up, there was continued use of the property in an improper manner. So, what assurances do we have that that simply isn't going to be the same? Now, you've-
Well, like I told the planning committee on the title, we are not going to park on the streets. Customers that will ever park on the street will be denied with severance. We're going to mark everything, and we're going to make sure that the requirement, parking space, all time, we're going to maintain that.
I guess in fairness to the applicant, when I look at this report, the report does continue to talk about vehicle sales and auto repair. So, you know, I just, I don't know, does, does the report change if we're simply talking about only repair?
Well, we have two application. We have one application for variant, we have one application for the CUP. At first, we submitted the CUP, kind of advise from the city assistant manager that lot is not enough for car dealership. So, we then turn in the variant application for repair on it.
And, Mr. Mayor, I can speak to the process a little bit there, what took place. So, yes, he's right, as, as we first started looking at this application and looking at the land size requirements, obviously, that wasn't an issue so much for the, the previous tenants there, because it was, there was already an established CUP. So, from Mr. Surleaf's perspective, we're kind of starting from scratch here of what we would do. So, the initial review from the engineers was the, the entire thing, the entire original application. But then when we got those results, we came back and we sat down and had a meeting, and I brought him these results, and at that point, he wanted to just change it down to just the repair sides of his business. At, in which, for, for my analysis, and then when I went back and asked further questions, you know, how would we do this, how would we modify this, the, the same recommendations are still there based on the lot size. That's, that's what really is the driving factor in all of this, and that's why, from the WSB perspective, they will tell us how it is written in code and how it applies. And, and so, that's the very basic guidance that we have from that. And so, at this point, what we do is we, we bring it forward to, the ultimate decision has to be made by Planning Commission and council, and it, it should be guided by, guided by code and guided by the 2040 comprehensive plan, and knowing that we're going to be doing another one of those in a couple of years, might want to just kind of think ahead to how, how this works and, and what kind of land requirements you want to have down the road.
So, kind of looking through these policy considerations, I think it does make a difference that sales is no longer a part of this.
Because sales did require a full acre.
Right, well, and not just that, what's kind of standing out to me is the, that if you take number two, and I apologize, I don't have page numbers on my, on my printed page, but when you're looking at the policy considerations page, number two, minimum building size must be at least 10% of lot size, which it is, and then I combine that with number five, all vehicle repair maintenance must take place within a completely enclosed building. Okay, so, if the business owners adhere to that, now I'm not having such a problem with lot size, because I believe the intent, or I'm going to guess, the intent of the drafters of that ordinance, they were thinking about things like eyesores, they're thinking about things like, you know, do they want blight, you know, having a used car dealership with lots of cars, and then you have several car dealerships along a corridor, that can be considered not blight, but it's, you know, it's not exactly attractive either. But, when you combine number two and number five together, all this stuff's taking place in buildings that already exist, then it's a matter of parking, just like strict customer parking. If the business located across from the sign shop, which I believe Councilmember Cook is talking about on Central and Third, if I'm starting to learn my streets, right, then it shows that that can be done by a responsible business owner, because they, they're maximizing their space without having cars just all over the place, although I, I'll keep that thought to myself. But, I guess, the thing, sales does make a big difference to me from what I stated earlier. I thought this was still for the whole thing. You know, a variance to allow for a business, for somebody to wrench on cars, I mean, we got, if, if I go back to the, to the analogy of, well, it's not that much bigger than a residential property, I wrench on my car in my garage, I got a neighbor that does, he's got a really nice classic car, a lot of folks wrench on their own cars, you're doing a business doing the same thing. So, it's really going to come down to, do we feel that you can properly manage the space when it comes to people parking? Now, if you're telling this body that it is by appointment only, I guess the question I would have for you is, is that going to be something that's like on signage, so that when people see that there's a, a repair shop, nice big sign says, you know, by appointment only?
Yes.
Okay, so that, I guess, is a tick in the right direction towards thinking about variance. How do you, how do you intend on managing folks if they don't have an appointment, all of a sudden you got three or four people coming in, now you got these cars all over the place? What's, how do you feel you'll be able to address that?
Well, like I said, we're going to put a sign out there, you have to come by appointment. If you come without appointment, we're going to deny you severance.
Can I hop in a second here? So, I mean, I did a, I did a quick look of all the different places that I can see that do car repair in the city. The last one that we granted a conditional use permit for, to my knowledge, was the Osseo Auto Space. They're sitting on .5 of an acre, and we're very clear in the conditional use permitting process, and if I'm mistaken, staff, please correct me, that we did not want to have on-street parking resources utilized for their business. The example that was brought up, I can tell you as a matter of fact, that the reason that they're able to operate in that .2, whatever acres it was, is because they are utilizing street parking resources consistently throughout the course of the day. You know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to hold these, this group of people to what was there before, but I also think it's unfair of us to judge on-street parking. If they want to utilize on-street parking, they should be able to utilize on-street parking to the same level that we're currently allowing people to do it, okay? That was a huge, that was a huge concern prior, okay? And so, you know, it's, if the business, and that was the nature, I believe, back in the different, you know, the 20, not only the 2020, but before that, there was another, there was another master plan update that happened, that was taken into control, into consideration here, as far as this is what we want to do going ahead. I still, I still feel as if this property size being that is going to be difficult to manage, and I think that, you know, I think that you're a good business person, the fact you're going through this, I think is great, but I also believe that it's going to be small, okay? And it's going to be problematic to be able to do the kind of work that you want to want to do in return on, on your investment. So, understanding how the other places, since that kind of got brought up and how they're utilizing city resources, you know, I, I'm not, even if this does go to conditional use permit, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to argue against any type of ban on on-street parking, because it's already being utilized in other places here, and I don't think that's fair of the applicant, applicant to do that if we move that direction. I just think this property, if it was just .41, and there wasn't that drainage easement back there, I would, I would be like, it's close enough, let's give it a shot, okay? But I don't think it is, okay? We often fall back onto the, we want to try to do the best thing for the applicant, we want to try to figure out how to mold or do this. I just don't think that there is a successful formula on this particular one. That's just my opinion. And so, is, I'm just going to pick a motion out there right now, so that we can consider and at least have some moving forward, yes?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schultz, before there's a motion, I would just say that if the council, again, I'm going to page, page 83 of your packet, which is the second page of the, if the motion's going to be to deny. If you want to add anything to the list of findings, this was just a draft based on the information that we had in the packet, but based on your discussion here, which is, which was a good discussion. If there's anything that you want to add, other than what's in one through five there, you should add that to your motion, and staff can add it accordingly. Otherwise, if it looks fine to you, that's good too.
Well, my motion is going to be to deny the variance request, so I don't know that there's necessarily anything else I need to add to that. If it doesn't go that way, then if we do go to approve it, I think there's a lot more, like what you're asking for, that needs to be there. And my only basis is the fact that, you know, it's less than our code by, not by a little bit, but by a lot, and there's a reason that the code evolved to where it evolved to, because of the way that the other resources around the city have been utilized, there was some thought process to it. So, if you think there's something I need to add, I'd welcome your input, but my motion at this point in time, Mr. Mayor, is to deny the variance request. You guys can do whatever you want to.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to deny the variance request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Harkoff. All right, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna, I'm just going to leave it at this. I remember when, and where it's different, I understand, is we weren't violating any city codes, we weren't asking for variances, but I, I remember talking to a lot of people that said, the space that I was in was too small for a cafe, it was too small for a coffee shop, it wasn't going to work. It's turned out okay. If this man thinks he can make this work here, and he can be successful, and he can do it within the means of the CUP, if that, if it gets to that, I don't know that I'm, I'm in a place to tell him, no. He might get in there, and he might figure out, you know what, this is just too small. And then he's going to work that, that arrangement out with his landowner, because they're going to have some sort of contract, and then they're going to, and then he's going to get, you know, that's on him as a businessman. That's not on me as, as, I think this, I think this is, is, is worth the variance, in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, I think, one of the things that keep, one of the things that keeps coming back to my mind is, okay, so we don't give the variance, and I want to play this out, okay, so we don't give the variance, we got two buildings that are sitting there empty, not generating any revenue, not generating any revenue for the city.
Well, they are, still in tax rolls.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Folk doesn't generate any additional revenue anyways.
Yeah, no, that's right, we don't have 1% yet. All right, so, but it's like, it's still, if a building is sitting empty, it's still sitting empty, and to me, that's, that's waste, and I abhor waste. I like to see things being used, I like seeing land being used, I like buildings being used. I think a building that's unoccupied and unused is just going to get worse and worse and worse. That said, I also understand the concerns about significantly less, because I keep going back to that word. But, I'm just, I'm trying to square up what, what is, what can be done in those buildings? Those buildings are obviously designed, at least as far as I can tell, you got big giant bay doors, I mean, these things are designed to be used in some manner that's similar to what the prospective applicant is wanting to use them for. So, I don't know, I mean, it's-
Could you just address what, what is minor repair? I mean, what kind of repair is going to be going on in the buildings?
Well, right now, I need to repair the garage door, the heat, which from April, I mean, from May to up to this time, I spent, I spent almost up to $30,000 on that building with the hope that I would get a variant, so that we can stop our little repairs and tire business to help our community.
But what time auto repairs, I mean, so people understand what type of business you'll be doing in the building, what's going to happen?
In the building, we're going to be doing tires. In the building, we're gonna be doing tires and manual auto repairs.
And what's classified as minor auto repair?
Oh, like under carrier, changing brakes, rudders.
Not like replacing engines and all that kind of stuff?
Yes.
It's more like a quickie loop place than a major auto repair place.
Mr. Mayor, not hearing a lot of additional comments at this point in time. I'd like to call the question.
All right, I've got a motion by Councilmember Schultz and my Councilmember Harkoff to deny the variance. All of them?
Wait, this is a resolution?
Oh, it's a resolution, sorry.
So, this is would be, so this is a motion to adopt a resolution denying the variance.
Yes.
So that's what you're voting on.
Yep.
And it's resolution number fifty-six. Councilmember Cook?
Nay.
Councilmember Torres?
Nay.
Councilmember Harkoff?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Poppy?
Nay. That motion fails three.
Well, the motion.
Two to three.
Right.
Two, four.
Right.
Motion fails two to three.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion granting, for a resolution granting a variance on a lot size requirement for the property located at three thirty-seven County Road eighty-one.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Cook to grant the variance. Is there a second? We have a motion. Is there a second before any further discussion? So how do, how do we do this if I want to, I can amend his, when I second, I can, how do I amend? I want to say yes, but add to that, since this is a resolution. I don't know if that works the same.
Do you want to add something to the resolution?
To the motion or what? What's the question? Yeah, so I'll second it and then I'll get to it when, when we get to the discussion. So, second. Okay, we have a second by Councilmember Torres. Okay, now, time for discussion. So, I think what I need for this to happen is something more than just an assurance at, at a public hearing. You know, I need to see something. But just stay focused, we're talking about.
Respectfully, that's a continued, conditional use.
That's the condition.
It's probably, that has nothing to do with this.
This is the variance for just.
From the lot size, gotcha, okay.
Good to go. Thank you for helping me understand that. Yeah, so that has nothing to do with what this motion is. It's granting a variance to do. Yep. This use on this lot size. Got it. And then all those other things.
You get to deal with next.
It's on the conditional use. Thank you. If this passes. Still learning. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Cook, second by Councilmember Torres, to accept or approve the variance.
Right, so this is resolution fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Councilmember Harkoff?
Nay.
Councilmember Schultz?
Nay.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Poppy?
Aye, motion passed three to two. Okay, now moving on, eight B conditional use permit for three thirty-second County Road eighty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is the conditional use permit, also known as a CUP request for the operation of car repair and accessories business at three thirty-seven County Road eighty-one. The property is owned highway commercial, C two N, where car repair is listed as an allowable conditional use under the Osseo City Code. The applicant has submitted all required documentation for review. And a public hearing was held before the Planning Commission on September thirtieth. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the CUP subject to conditions. The city's planning consultant, WSB, and staff recommend denial of the CUP based on the property's lot size. We've already spoken about that. And then also the additional drainage easement that goes off to the south side of the lot. If council considers approval, staff outlined the following conditions to ensure safe and compliant operation. Number one is limit outdoor parking to fourteen stalls, including four designated employee stalls. Limit indoor parking to three vehicles, one per stall or lift. Require that all vehicle storage, including overnight storage, be screened by a fence. And number four is maintain clear ingress and egress for emergency vehicles at all times. So at this point, the actions that we need from the city council is to open a public hearing, hear comments, and close. And then followed by your deliberations on the CUP.
Okay, so first would need a motion to open, open the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Cook to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to one. The public hearing is open at eight thirty, or eight twenty-eight. Is there any public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of letters to read into record for the public hearing. First one is from Denise Butler, Associate Director at Acer, African Career Educational Resource, Inc. It says, Dear Osseo City Council, I'm ready to express my full support for Tire World Plus, a trusted automotive repair and maintenance shop owned and operated by George Sirleaf. I have had the pleasure of working with George Sirleaf and their team for four years and can confidently say that they run one of the most professional, reliable, and customer-focused auto shops in our community. Tire World Plus provides a full range of automotive services, including key services, diagnostics, brake repairs, and tire services, and has built a long reputation for honesty, technical expertise, and exceptional customer service. Their commitment to quality of work and fair pricing has earned them a local customer base and the respect of both clients and business partners alike. In addition to their technical skills, George Sirleaf has demonstrated strong business leadership and a genuine commitment to report, to supporting our local economy. They often go above and beyond to help customers, offering flexible scheduling, transparent communication, and dependable service that keeps vehicles safe and customers satisfied. I wholeheartedly support Tire, Tire's World Plus, Tire World Plus, in their application for a CUP to support their business expansion and believe that any investment or collaboration with them would be met with professionalism, integrity, and long-term success. If you require any additional information, and I have contact information here. The next letter is from Osseo resident Kenny Nelson. It reads, Council, Council and staff. Last month, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for a variance and a CUP, which I submitted comments. I pointed out how many businesses are doing similar work in the central business, business district on smaller lots. I attempted to point out that if I stared at those other businesses, I would find similar violations to those that got his property's CUP revoked. I'm not sure why you have felt the need to have a second public hearing, as I have never seen this done in the last fifteen years. There was no explanation in the packet as to why we needed a second public hearing. To me, it seems like the city paid WSB to write a report to give the city cover so it won't get sued over denying this variance. The city ordinance is arbitrary, just simply stating you need half an acre, with no one pointing out why you would need half an acre to do this type of business. WSB's report talks about how part of the lot is not usable, but again, there's nothing in the city ordinance that says about what percentage of the lot needs to be usable. City staff talked about concerns about public safety and being able to get to the rear part of this property with an ambulance or fire truck, and those are valid concerns that can easily be enforced with a CUP. I don't see anything in the packet about a report from the fire department about this property. Signed, Kenny Nelson. One more, if you will allow me to read. All right, this one is from Dan Kohler. This applicant from Car World, Inc., LLC. Is this the same business that was operated at this, at this address illegally in the state of Minnesota had to issue with VIN numbers and titles not matching? Do they have a clean dealer's license? Was this business that had people show up at this address all hours, even beyond nine P M? Can they control the crowd? The Osseo police spent many hours maintaining activities at taxpayers' expenses. I am opposed to another car repair business at this location. And that's all the public comments I have.
If you don't public, come forward, state your name. Yeah, you can come to the podium.
Go ahead, Mayor, and go ahead, the council board. When he is there, you know, I just moved in the area for Atlanta, Georgia, pretty much like two weeks and a half ago. Mr. Sirleaf, he really did a great job for me recently. I have a car issue and he wanted above and beyond, you know, and his ethic was very, very great. You know, he prioritized my business and I would really love to work with him in the future.
My name is Marley Camaro. I own an auto repair shop on Broken Boulevard, seventy-five oh one Tire Express. I have known Mr. Sirleaf and worked with him on many occasions. He's a very reliable business person. And I do highly recommend that this council give him the opportunity to continue his business. He'll be beneficial to the community, to himself, and the city that he loves so much. Thank you.
Evening, everybody. I've been knowing George Sirleaf for a while, you know, like since twenty thirteen. I was living overseas in Korea. So, like I said to the other body the last time in September, George encouraged me to move to Minnesota. And I was looking for a place for my daughter to go to school. And he told me about Osseo High. So I moved to Osseo like twenty twenty-two, no, twenty twenty-one. And my daughter joined me in twenty twenty-two. And right now, she's in Osseo High School. She's a senior. George has been helping people for a while. And I got to know George through my brother that worked back home in Liberia with EPA. So I chose, George know what hazard is and all the thing. I just pray that you helping out so he can carry on his business. Now, the George, you know, previous experience, but he gonna deliver. So we here to support Josh, and it's in your hands. Leave it to, so I'm happy to go to the shop. You know, if you can carry your cars there, to repair your cars and see how it works. It's just, I don't know how many miles away, so you can go to see it on a day-to-day basis. Please grant George this, and he will implement it well. Thank you.
Any other public comment? See none, we look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Cook to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
And by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. We're adjourned at eight thirty-six. Right, now additional discussion. One question for the applicant, if you. Just for point of clarity, no auto sales, correct?
Yes.
No auto body repair?
Yes.
No painting of vehicles?
Yes.
Okay. And then have we seen, or the staff seen, any of the requirements or any planning of the fencing and how that's gonna work on this site?
Mr. Mayor, I can speak to that. George has come to me with some plans for increasing the fencing around, especially the northern end, where it meets the County Road eighty-one frontage road.
Okay.
And then extending it down along that far western side of the property. But he's, he has got plans to do that, but he's held off getting, getting too deep into it, just based on these proceedings.
But I mean, you've seen preliminary plans.
Yes.
And then on this side, could you just move your cursor where you're, there, yeah?
Right here?
Yeah.
So fencing right around this area that's currently open. And then the backside of the building here is screened by the building.
Yeah.
But we will be looking at if there's any fencing along this bordered edge here. We'll just, we'll need to go do some visual determination of what's there now, if it needs to be the same fencing kind of continued from up here.
And, and one side fencing is fine?
Yes, as long, as long as it's screened from, from the street view, yeah.
Okay.
And that's for overnight, overnight parking.
Yep.
Yep.
Sounds like there'll be limited overnight parking with appointment only?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah. So I think this is gonna be, we're gonna, this is gonna require needing to change, obviously, the language in the resolution. So I'll kind of try to quickly go through a few of these for consideration. So, on the page where it says about halfway down, be it further resolved that said conditional use permit is approved, subject to the following conditions. Excuse me. So in number one, it currently says parking is limited to fourteen outdoor parking stalls, including four designated employee parking stalls. Since this is not going to be a sales operation, I think that should be limited to only employee parking, perhaps one or two stalls for people who are gonna go in, talk, and leave. So I, I'm guessing that could be, how many, how many employees do you intend on having that would need to park?
Like four, four employees.
So I would, I would suggest, as a starting point, that be changed to fourteen to six, which includes the four designated parking stalls. Indoor parking limited to three, one per stall, that can stay the same. Any vehicle storage waiting for repairs must be screened behind a fence. I think if I understood correctly, this is gonna be by appointment only.
Yeah.
So that can actually be stricken. You don't need storage, right? Because they're gonna make an appointment, they come in, they drop off their vehicle, you'll start working on it.
Well.
It could start overnight. Is that how, they could drop it and you'd pull it? Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
We need overnight, overnight.
So it's not gonna be in the street? Yep, got you, okay.
Don't do that, they're gonna, they're gonna drop it in the street. Then the, I'm gonna be fighting with this guy.
Right, the ones waiting for repairs. But again, if I'm thinking about this, if you take by appointment only, person's gonna come, they got their appointment, they come and drive it up.
Maybe sometime you might not complete the job.
Right, but I mean, that's where the other two parking spots, right, are for? Okay, well, I think we can leave the three alone. Any vehicle storage has to be behind a fence, all right? Speaking of the fence, I think there should be a part in the resolution that makes it a requirement to have that fencing be complete before they, you start operation. So it's, it's something you have to do. If you're gonna start your business, you need to have the fence. Because right away, if you don't have the fence, you're gonna be in violation right from jump street, because you'll be breaking number four. Adequate ingress, ingress, egress, that's kind of a no-brainer, that stays the same. I would suggest putting in a provision that you, since you have agreed, and I based my decision on the fact that you said you are going to do paint by appointment only and that you are willing on the fact that you said you are going to do paint by appointment only and that you are willing to put that up as signage. I would like to have that actually in the resolution itself. Something to the effect that you must provide signage stating that repairs are done by appointment only, so the public can see that. And I did a quick little Google search, take A I for what it's worth. But there is or can be a distinction between light auto repair and what's what's considered complex or heavy auto repair. So I'm going to read this just real quick for the record. In this opinion, A I opinion, take it again for what it's worth. It says that light auto repair involves routine maintenance and straightforward fixes for everyday passenger vehicles such as cars, S U Vs and light trucks. It includes tasks like oil changes, brake pad replacements, which I think you mentioned, and fixing minor electrical issues and is distinct from heavy repair, which deals with more complex problems like engine overhauls, which I believe the mayor was referring to, and heavy working on heavy duty vehicles. In addition, a provision should be in here stating that auto body repair and painting are construed to be on the heavy repair side. So I think
Typically, they're completely different classification.
Exactly.
Because you have light, heavy, and you have
And auto body.
Body repair.
Right.
Completely different classification.
Correct. And this, and we make a provision in this resolution that says you are allowed to do this light repair at the exclusion of no heavy repair and no body repair auto repair. And I believe that should be inclusive because I do want to respect the the reasons why the folks that weren't for this, I want to respect that they have valid, they had valid concerns. And I think even while it may not address all of those concerns, I would hope that it goes to lending itself towards addressing at least some of those concerns. I know that I would be in favor of it if we were to change or update or amend the resolution to include those items that I just brought in. And I I don't know how that's going to work, how we do that tonight or whatever. But those are the things that I put on the record that I would need to have agreed upon in order to pass this C U P.
So then a motion would look like approval with noted changes.
Exactly.
And we'd have to make sure those are listed out correctly so the record can take those in.
Before, yeah, Mr. Mayor, before you do that, because I I don't disagree with a lot of what you said, there is one that I do disagree with. I don't think there's a need to start micromanaging the parking stalls on site behind the fences. I I don't, I mean, I think what they choose to do with those parking stalls behind the fences, so long as there is still adequate ingress, egress for maintenance and emergency vehicles. I I don't think it, I don't, again, those those parking stalls are behind the fencing, screened from the general public. I mean, that to me, I think is is a little bit more micromanagement than what we need to do. If they have, if they think they can get through thirteen vehicles in a day and so they make those appointments. I mean, I don't, I don't, and somebody has got to go to work. And so they got to drop their car off at seven o'clock, even their their appointment might not be till one. You know, I I could think maybe that I don't, to me, that might be a little excessive oversight. But I do like the other stuff. I do, I do like having some stipulations in there about making sure that the the language is in there about the the type of work that is permitted on site, you know, being the the light auto repair that then excludes the other things that we mentioned. You know, those things, I think I could, I I agree with that a hundred percent.
And and, you know, I'm I'm fine with as long as we're limiting to six to Councilmember Cook's point. Yeah, we're not in the business of micromanaging businesses.
Parking space.
I don't think there's a need to limit to six. I I don't, I don't think there's a need to limit the parking inside of that fencing. I I don't, I don't see that as a as a as a necessary aspect to this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
You know, I I also do find if you, you know, we did talk earlier and we're trying to compare apples to apples here. I think the fencing requiring is unduly burdensome because show me another place that has fencing. So, I mean, if we want to be fair and equitable to this, I think in you and everybody wants to go, you know, like, well, this is working fine. This is working fine. Why are we making this guy do something we've not made anybody else in the city do?
So I would ask a question of staff then. Was there a reason why that was included in the first place, which was the only reason why I brought it up? Was it was already there?
It's it's because it is a requirement of a C U P in this particular district as of as of now per city code.
So in other words, it's following existing city code then?
Yes, so it's it's representative of something coming again forward as a completely new conditional use permit where true, you you wouldn't see a lot of these things that have been, you know, have a longstanding conditional use permit.
So would it be fair to say then what we would be doing in effect to address Councilmember Schultz's concerns is that since this is already a variance, we're trying to minimize the amount of things that need to be varied from. In other words, we're keeping as much of the ordinance intact. We're making a variance to these other basically to the size thing. Right? So we would keep those things in that are currently already in the ordinance anyway.
On the conditional use, as we did on Fifth Avenue for the outdoor storage there, we had they had to be screened.
Okay.
And we do have, we do have some areas that have fencing, but the challenge with the fencing is is that we're not talking about what kind of fencing. What's the intention of the fencing? Is it to screen cars? So then it should be a privacy type fence, something that is creating that way. There's a neighboring property that has fences, but doesn't screen anything.
I mean, that's valid, that's a valid point.
I know. But I'm just saying, I just, you know, that's that's my whole point. If we're going to, if we're going to go down this thing of whatever else, it's just like, I just don't see where, you know, we've already made the determination that he can do his thing. Okay? I mean, I think that limiting some parking spots makes sense. If the fencing is something that wants to go ahead, to the point, the argument to me doesn't hold any water that that's part of the code because we already just threw the code out the window on the last action item. Okay? So why are we going to make him do something that nobody else in that area has to do? That doesn't make any sense to me.
No, but at the same time, the only variance is on the size, but if it was the right size, these other items would still be a factor of
Could be, but they don't have to be. It could be, but, you know, I mean, the the whole conversation started off, unfortunately, comparing him to the previous business owner. That was not okay. Okay, he's a new guy. I mean, he's going to be held to the same standard. He knows what our standards are. He knows the lengths we're going to go to to enforce it. Okay, I get that. But I just have a really hard time when we use the code to defend one part of this decision and we throw it out the window for the other parts. Doesn't make any sense to me. And it seems unduly burdensome. A fence is not inexpensive to do. Okay? So, you know, we're we're doing all this stuff, but I just, I'm not, I would like to see some cohesive thought rather than just say, oh, this is part of the code. It's it's in there. It's not in every place else. There's no screening of the other major auto repair places around here, none. Okay, but why are we picking on this guy? Doesn't make any sense to me. That's what I'm saying. I mean, we're outvoted. I'm too, I'm cool with that on the variance part, right? That was, that was my opinion. But I don't believe we should be unduly burdensome to him and his business by doing some of the stuff that we're not asking anybody else to do.
And and I guess to that extent, I would agree if we're not having anybody else do it. I had made an assumption, possibly wrongly, that since it was in the ordinance, it was being done elsewhere. If it's not, then I would actually agree. I'd actually actually like to ask staff with a different hat a question about this.
Just give, give, Mr. Mayor, counsel, I just want to advise. So if you look at our conditional use permitting process, right, for a long time, businesses come and go and we were not taking those conditional use permits off the land, right, off the property. So for a long time, business would leave, maybe a new business would come right in right after so they could assume whatever was in the conditional use permit from before. What's happened is is over time, I'm just explaining this, over time, the council and our past, obviously planners have decided to go into a different direction when it comes to our, not only just our planning, but fence. I mean, everything in the ordinance was there for a reason. Variances are there to then go ahead and do this. Conditional use permits are new and those are the new conditions. It would be the same as when we look at a sign. You can replace the sign in its current size, but if you want to go bigger, you have to get a conditional use permit or variance, you know, because our code has changed and that happens in every city. And so the the reasons behind this, now, I'm not saying what to do here because it's not my place. But the reasons why this is in the conditional use permit currently is because this is a new conditional use permit. So if you look around to all these other auto repair places, and there was different staff too. So there was staff that may not recommend this, may not put it in there. I don't know what happened with all these other repair shops. I just know when we're talking about this current repair shop, that is our current ordinance, that is currently what we expect as far as staff is concerned. And again, that is just, that's how, that's how this staff, we we follow code and that's what we're supposed to do and we make recommendations. Then it's up to the council as a whole to go ahead and make decisions. So I just wanted you to know that the history of this is this is a new C U P. So we're coming up against differences because this, the C U P for one business might have been in place for twenty years and there might have been three different businesses in there, but it was never taken off the property and made it to go through a process. I don't know that for sure. I know there's there's some history with the O C O, the newest one, I think out on County Road eighty one, the repair place that was more recent, been a few years yet. So that's kind of why this is the way it is right now. But council has the opportunity to do what they wish to do with that and make the C U P what they feel is is in the best interest of the council and our residents. I mean, you know, and as far as from now, I'll take my hat off, I'll put my public safety hat on. Our, we're as a police department, we are set by the rules by our elected officials. We only enforce the laws that are on the books and we can enforce C U Ps based on what's on the books. So whatever you put on the books, that's what we're going to enforce because that's what we do. We're not out making up laws, we're not out making up conditional use permits, that's not our job. And so for me to tell you about public safety, we're going to do what you wish us to do and what laws are put on the books. And so whatever C U P is on that property, we're going to take a look at it all the time, which we do for other properties and look at C U Ps. And those can be very old. You know, there could be several years on a property with a conditional use permit. That just hasn't come up. Nobody's left. Maybe the business has been been in business for thirty, forty years. We don't, we don't know. And so then when things turn over and this conditional use permit was revoked and taken off the books. And so now we're putting a new one on, which then goes with current law. And that's where we're coming from as staff and W S B and everyone. And that's why this is one that is a little different because there's not just a continuation of a business at that location. So that's from me.
So, yeah, I would, I mean, after hearing Councilmember Schultz's rationale for the fence, I mean, I guess that does make sense. If nobody else is doing it, why would we encumber a new business, especially when they're just starting out with something that isn't necessarily necessary? Because I'm not hearing that, oh, there's, you know, if there was some huge public safety reason to do it, then that's one thing. I'm I'm thinking that I heard that, no, in this case, there's, you know, fence isn't something that is like a have to, you know? And I would assume, and I know what assuming means, but I'm going to assume that when that ordinance was created, it was created again for more of a sight kind of thing, you know, blight or whatever you want to call it. You know, it's having cars parked all over the place, especially if you got flat tires and things like that, that's unattractive. If you put up a fence, fences are made for two reasons, it's to keep people out and it's to hide stuff. And especially like the idea of not hiding stuff, being able to drive by, see somebody's operation. To me, that's a good thing, right? So a fence could impede that. So I've got no problem removing number four based on what Councilmember Schultz brought up. So I guess I'm going to take a crack at this. Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a resolution.
A motion?
Oh, motion.
You make a, you make a motion.
Make a motion.
You don't make a resolution.
Or make them, yeah, making a motion to grant or pass, to pass the resolution granting the requests from George Serleaf for a conditional use permit to allow a car repair and accessories business at three thirty seven County Road eighty one with the conditions that I had put on the record earlier without the
Go through them in vigor.
Go through them.
Go through them? Okay. So under the resolution that conditional use permit is approved, subject to the following conditions. Parking is limited to six outdoor parking stalls. Indoor parking is limited to three vehicles, one per stall or lift. Three, any vehicle storage waiting, oh, no, that's gone. So scratch three, scratch four. Adequate ingress and egress must be maintained and access may not be blocked for emergency vehicles. The business owner must provide signage stating that appointments are made or that repairs are made by appointment only and that should be readily easily seen by the public when they're driving by. That the business will consist of only the light auto repair.
Yes.
That the business will not conduct any heavy repair. The business will not conduct any auto body work. The business will not do any painting of vehicles. And then six through eleven in the resolution in the packet to be included.
Just clarifying, and the parking was, you're limited to six spots?
Six outdoor parking stalls.
It was, it was fourteen, right?
No, including, including the four. So you got six, you parked six cars there.
Originally it was eighteen, right?
So originally it was when there was sales, but to the earlier point.
Can you guys increase it to eight?
Okay, well, let's just finish your motion. I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that.
So we got a motion by Councilmember Torres to approve it with noted changes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook. Now we can ask
Mr. Mayor?
Discussion, yes.
So limiting it to six total outdoor parking stalls is not tenable for this gentleman's business. He's got three, he's got three cars on a rack. You take it off, you can't, you you, he's got, you're leaving him basically two parking spots.
Yeah. I I
Okay, so, I mean, I would, you know, I would support all the different things you made, but leave the fourteen parking stalls, including four designated employee target parking. Because otherwise, we're standing the same reason that we argued, that I argued against the fencing. It's unduly burdensome. He literally can't make money doing that.
Yeah.
We'll be back here in in three months to revoke his C U P.
Yes. Yep.
And given the size constraints, I'm just asking, so given the size constraints, are still good with fourteen?
Well, they're all striped here, they're still adequate access to the back.
They're striped there with one extra.
Behind the building too, so it's totally screened.
I can be on the building.
Behind the building, out of sight.
I can live with that. Yeah, fourteen, so my motion
Would you like to revise your motion?
Yeah, I might to amend my motion and change six to fourteen.
On point number one.
On point number one.
Just include point number one as it's written?
Yes.
I'm fine with including point number one as written.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember, or amended motion by Councilmember Torres with noted changes and also just re-including number one as stated in the packet with the fourteen parking stalls. Councilmember Cook, would you?
Yes.
Update your second?
I will update my second to that.
Okay. And is council clear on what?
Yeah, Mayor, just one more clarification. So the motion included removing conditions three and four?
Correct.
That was correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Just one quick
Yeah.
thing. The the any vehicle waiting for repairs must be screened behind, and it's any vehicle storage overnight must be screened in behind the fence. Would there be any desire to change number four, leave number four, but change it to any vehicle storage overnight must happen on site or on property?
Building?
Well, I don't care where on the property, but it needs to be on the, like, I, again, speaking to this idea of we don't want
we don't want cars sitting on 81 or sitting up front of roads overnight. But again, I also want to respect Councilmember Schultz's, uh, thoughts earlier of, you know, that we don't want to limit the, the ability to-
By appointment only, there would be somebody to receive the vehicles, right?
Yeah.
So that, that was my question, I don't know what, I guess I'm just opening that question up to the group, is that something that we feel like needs to be said or needs to be in the CUP? That overnight parking must happen on property?
I, I don't see that as being a bad thing, because then that precludes people just using the excuse, oh, I've got an appointment and the appointment's a week later.
Our issue earlier was the fence, right? As far as that, that was kind of the, but there still is the issue of overnight parking and where that overnight parking can legally occur.
I mean, we can put that as a part of the condition, right? The other thing that we could also do is later on, deal with it and we could just post no overnight parking. It's the cost of a couple of signs. And that takes care of the whole thing. Again, the challenge is, is that from my perspective, if we're, I'm trying to be fair and equitable here. That's what I'm trying to be for this, for this guy. And future, future places as well, okay? Because when you're approving the conditional use permit, it's all great, he's the one that's putting all the time, the effort, the cash into this. But if he in a year and a half goes down the road and says, you know what? It's, it's this business, I've been overly successful, I can't make a living here anymore, I want to sell it, that's going to go with whomever there, we've seen examples of how that works. And we don't have, again, I, I don't want to be overly burdensome with him, I want to be fair and equitable, but I don't want to put a bunch of extra conditions on him that we're not putting on other places. So that's, that's my thing, yeah, yeah, so that's, that's my thing.
I just brought it up for fodder of conversation.
And I, I'm just responding to, to, to be how I'm feeling about it, if, you know? The decision's already been made, we're going to let him do this. So now let's let him do it in the fairest equitable way that we can.
And I think to that point, we've already seen that our public safety officials have been able to identify when people are doing things they're not supposed to be doing, which the parking out there becoming a problem.
And remember, we do have an ordinance that prohibits parking in any spot for more than 24 hours.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, since we have that-
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I'm fine with moving forward as is.
All right, we have a motion, a second and a further discussion. Lieutenant Attorney, teach in please.
Thank you, Mayor, this is resolution number 58, uh, Councilmember Harkoff.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye, motion passes five to zero, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for enduring this.
Yes.
And good luck.
Yes.
You can call me tomorrow about your permits.
All right. Number nine, old business, no old business, number 10, new business. 10A, special assessment 2025 delinquent waste and utility accounts.
Mayor, Council, Oseo City Code, Section 51.37C allows delinquent accounts for utilities to be assessed to property owners. It also states that the amount certified shall include late payment penalties and administrative charges. And the amount shall bear interest as determined by council resolution. All property owners with delinquent amounts due to the city and Walters Refuse and Recycling as of September 1st, 2025, were notified by letter of the pending assessment by mail on September 15th, 2025. The city accounts are for water, sanitary sewer and storm utility services. Walters Refuse and Recycling accounts are for garbage recycling yard waste disposal services provided to residential properties in Oseo. As part of the current agreement with waste haulers, the city assists in collection of delinquent garbage costs by certifying delinquent waste accounts as allowed by Minnesota Statute 443.015. In unpaid by November 21st, 2025, the account, or the amount in the certified column will be assessed to Hennepin County Property Taxes, along with 14 months of interest at a rate of 5.8%. Assessments must be adopted by resolution to be placed on a property owner's property tax statement per Minnesota Statute 444.05 sub 2A. So that we're asking that the city council, uh, adopt a resolution certifying delinquent utility charges and waste removal charges against specified properties as presented in exhibits A and B, or to deny adoption of the resolution and carry past due accounts as utility and city services accounts receivable.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution certifying delinquent utility charges and delinquent waste charges against specified properties.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilmember Cook, second by Councilmember Schultz to approve the resolution certifying the delinquent charges. Is there any further discussion? Say none, Attorney teach in.
Resolution 59, Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Councilmember Harkoff.
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Motion pa, aye, motion passes five to zero. 10B, cannabis, cannabis discussion.
Mayor, Council, this is, uh, a, a conversation that, um, we need to have as far as to move forward with our, our municipal cannabis store. So we had been in negotiations on a lease, uh, that is no longer tenable. And so, uh, staff is asking or recommending approving 33 Second Streets Northeast, our press building. It is a city-owned building, uh, that that should be the focus of our municipal cannabis store. What we're looking at is based on factors such as current lease prices, available known locations, general location and parking availability. I think that, that, that staff believes that this building, um, does give us all of those things. Uh, we're requesting permission to work with the contractor to bring back recommendations to council on further steps, which include researching and discussing areas like banking, architects, workflow between operations and the city staff. Staff is working on finalizing the contract with Voyager, which we brought back to council for review. And so we're just asking to approve, uh, focusing on that location for our cannabis store and then moving, allowing staff to move forward to get some of those inner working things figured out and brought back to council for approval, hopefully in group, um, group asks, I guess.
Mr. Mayor? Yep. Um, and, and I could probably defer to Councilman Schultz on this, but Cannabis Committee has, uh, been, you know, meeting, been talking, been discussing things, um, as a group and with Voyager. Um, and I think kind of across the board feels like this is the best option at this point, moving forward, to get this thing off the ground. Is this going to be its forever home? We don't know that yet, but, um, to get things moving and to get things rolling so that we can then hopefully start to generate some revenue, um, that would maybe allow us other options, uh, in the future. This is the, this is the, the best step moving forward. It's also, in my opinion, it's also an opportunity to, you know, improve this property. And, you know, potentially create, make this property viable for something else in the long run, uh, as well, or as a potential asset to move later on down the line. But it's, it's, I think, in the immediate, you know, sort of short-term plan of this, this is the, that I think the, the most viable option, uh, moving forward. And I would, I would be in full favor of giving staff permission to start, start, you know, doing next steps. But I don't know if you want to expand on that?
Yeah, I'll expand on that just a little bit. Um, yeah, you know, this has been a long process and, you know, we'd like to have certain things a certain way, but it's just not a tenable solution for us. Uh, I want to throw something else into the mix here, because I can already see this coming, like, you gotta, you're going to have a 7,000 square foot cannabis store, no. You know, the preliminary plans call between 2 and 3,000. I also just kind of want to let, um, council know that staff is currently in communication with another business that would love to take the other half of that building. Which, you know, that kind of fits the original purpose of why that property was originally bought. You know, we're interested in redevelopment, that also helps us crack our nut down on some of that difference type of stuff. And, uh, I personally met with one of the principal people, and I know that they're in communication with staff, to bring the, all the other two, the other ownership and investors over to take a look and then just kind of sort through, from that perspective, where we want to go, what we want to do. It's a, it's a very accessible building. We've got a lot of options here that we can mitigate some of the, um, some of the concerns that we had about not having it on 81. You know, we've got a gateway sign that we can utilize, there's other opportunities there. I, staff is already looking into, um, from the planning perspective, signage, um, in areas, because that's a very, even though it's off central, it's still a very highly visible property from central. You know, you have tremendous car counts a day through holiday. And I just think, you know, it, is it the, is it the ideal solution? No. But it's a cost-effective solution for us and it would get us, allow us to get in there and operating. And it just gives us what, I think what we need to do to explore this. And if we do a successful thing here and we split the building into different pieces, if it doesn't go, we still have a very marketable piece of property, um, on our hands. And it's just, I think that right now to, you know, Councilmember Cook's, um, position, I, I, it is the solution that'll work for us now. Who knows, maybe down the road, another space comes open, then we have to determine that. But we need, you know, this is a very broad permission we're giving staff, but we need to be able to give the staff the opportunity to move on this, because if we unduly burden staff by having individual things and everything we decide from here on out is still going to have to be approved. It just gives them the burden to get as much of this stuff done, to get this thing to the finish line and make it a lot easier for us as opposed to piecemealing this down the road. So I'm definitely in favor of this solution.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, um, Voyager, the group that we've been working with, seems to think that this could be a viable spot as well. I mean, they, they think this can still be a profitable situation for us.
Mayor, Councilmember Cook, yes, we, we have had those conversations with Voyager. They have come back and said it is a viable option. And we are going to, as far as staff is concerned, we're going to be walking this road with Voyager hand in hand, trying to figure all these things out. So it's not a, it's not a one-sided deal, we're using that company, um, for what they're, they're there for, which is to guide us and help us make the right decisions.
And Voyager's been active on this with us for years. There's other facilities that we looked at in the preliminary phases of this, they're just like, if you go here, we're not interested. It's not going to make any sense for us. And they very clearly said that, yep, we're going to be able to do this, this is the location, we're still going to fund capital expenses as part of the agreement and figure all that stuff out.
Okay, with that, once I'm going to like to make a motion.
I'll make the motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve using 33 Second Street Northeast as our municipal cannabis store and give staff permission to research, discuss and make recommendations to the council on this following steps to get this store open.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve using the press building, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I think, while not originally a fan of this, I think, you know, using a little colloquialism, when life gives you lemons, you make lemonade. And I think the Cannabis Committee has done a good job of making some lemonade out of this, because it kind of kills two birds with one stone. We've got a piece of property that had been sitting empty, that we're now going to be able to actually use and it's going to be put to good use. And two, it's going to get our thing going. I mean, every day that passes where this thing's not open, to me, with my business mind is, well, there was some lost money and then every day is another day of lost money, so let's get it open. I have all the confidence in the world that the Cannabis Committee has been doing a great job. Staff has been working very hard, thank you staff for continuing to work on this. And if the consultants say it's okay, that's a, that's a big checkbox for me, so I'm, I'm in support of this.
All right, any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero, all right. 10C, approve council payable.
Most approve the bills.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve tonight's council payables, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero, administrator report.
Mayor and Council, just, uh, one thing is I'd like to give staff, all of our staff, city staff, a lot of kudos. We've been, um, really working on a lot of different things within our city staff that we've never seen before. Everything from, um, us talking to our state legislators, to us, you know, moving forward with cannabis, to, um, doing a, a budget this year, all at the same time, along with, you know, looking at water towers and towers and, you know, our staff has been really moving quickly and, and doing a lot and I, I do appreciate, um, their work. But I also wanted to say thank you to the council for taking on a lot of these hard, difficult conversations and being able to move forward. I think that really helps our community. You know, one of the other things we're going to be dealing with in this next year is the local option sales tax. And so I just really appreciate your hard work. All the committees have been very responsive, doesn't matter which committee it is. What staff has asked for guidance has been excellent and so we, we really appreciate all of your hard work. I don't think people see everything behind the scenes, they only see what comes up here at council meetings. And all that hard work and steps and time and energy is something that I, I just don't think anybody sees, especially from council and, and truly from staff too. You just don't see all the work that goes behind all of these agenda items and the information that we're sharing. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone, because I think we're doing a good thing here for our community and I think we're moving our community in the right direction, so thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Administrator, recommend.
No report tonight, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Council on Attorneys, report, according, Attorney teach in.
No report, because the World Series is tied, in case anybody wants to know.
We're going to get to that. What inning?
Sixth inning.
All right, thank you. All right, Councilmember Harkoff.
No report.
Councilmember Torres.
No report.
Wow.
Loons are tied, where I should be right now, but I'm not, civic duty.
Have one of Loons gone south now for the winter?
Two unused season tickets.
No report.
Councilmember Schultz.
I just want to echo, um, Shane's kudos regarding the staff. You know, I've been sitting up here a long time, I think we've accomplished more in the last year and a half than I think we've accomplished, I think it very, could be argued that we've accomplished more than a year and a half than we have in 10 years. And we've actually done that with less staff, okay? You know, um, you know, the city administrator position is, is decreased. We're doing a great job, the city staff's doing a great job. You know, it's, council members, when called upon to participate in meetings and everything, is going above and beyond. If you think that this job is just this couple hours, a couple times, a couple times a month, that's not even close to the amount of time that it takes. And, uh, I just think they're doing a wonderful job, I really, really do. And, uh, you know, I want to thank the people for coming up here, um, tonight, specifically for matters from the floor, being respectful, that's a nice change. You know, we don't always have to agree, but I say it again, and we said it before, if we, just because we don't give you what you want, doesn't mean we're not listening, okay? It might seem like that to you, like nobody ever hears me, but I will tell you that the more respectful you are when you talk to us, it makes it a lot easier to hear what you're having to say, it's just human nature. And, uh, you know, so for that, I just want to, I want to give kudos and, you know, just not trying to tip the hat here, but, you know, people are referencing our preliminary budget, okay? I just re, I want to reiterate the fact that our preliminary budget is preliminary for a reason, okay? There was a tremendous amount of cost that we couldn't predict at that time. And, uh, when that comes before, um, I'm getting updates on the Budget Committee every single day about, oh, we got the budget down more, we got the budget down more. I think everybody's going to be very surprised with what we come back for approval. That's all I got.
All right, thank you.
Positively surprised, sorry.
Yes, yes.
Thanks for that addition.
All right, and with that, moving on to number 14, adjournment. Okay, I got a motion by Councilmember Schultz, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres, non debatable, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero, we're adjourned at 9:20, thank you.